Start with the engineer employment agreement, has everybody had a moment to take a look? The only changes that I noticed were the same three point two percent increase. Questions, comments?
I'll second.
And for any of the death count where we do review this every year for Zach. Right, there's a motion and a second, any more discussion? If not, all those favorites signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And she carries.
Looks like chair signature.
Second item is to you, so your friend with the OT budget amendment.
I'm a week ahead of the local, but. Honest mind, I guess, I better keep on. Yeah, one more piece of paper, the actual DOT budget amendment is. What I gave you. This is what you'll see when we do the local one, but it to me explains it a little bit better and what we're changing. Um, the exact same thing as what's on the DOT one as far as fi- as far as final numbers. But basically, we're just moving some money from some construction dollars that we're not getting done, that will not be getting done this current fiscal year. Um, and moving it to two different areas, one. Uh, engineering expenditures, a lot of that is for the bridge ratings that we had to do because of the new law change. Um, that was a significant part of it. Then we also did get our GPS equipment, uh, early this fiscal, this current fiscal year in July. Um, and then we had a, our construction laser stopped working on us. We had to get a different one of those, so that's kind of what the, that first part of it was. The overall majority of it was for new equipment, and this was for equipment that was supposed to come in last fiscal year. That didn't get done, that came in this fiscal year, so. Um, that's why we're over there as well as the, we did finally find a survey van as well. And I didn't, didn't have that budgeted for, um, we did have the, did get revenue for it from the insurance check, obviously.
More revenue than.
More revenue than what we ended up working out pretty good once all said and done, just took us a while to. To find one. But that's really what we're doing is, is I guess making those line items solvent, so.
There's a motion and a second, any more discussion? If not, all those in favor say, if I was saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Zach, there, there was a. Uh, Greece, Coring, West Rita, like three miles and I got a road there. In core samples, what was that about?
I think what that was is remember, oh, probably been a month and a half or two months ago, we talked about there were the. Iowa County Engineer Service Bureau was doing a pilot project basically throughout the, across the state and the two county wide, uh, area. Uh, rolling gravel roads.
Yep.
I think what they're doing is getting material samples of that gravel.
Before they roll?
Before they roll, so they can use that, use that as their base, trying to understand the material. They put the, include that into their equation and their calculations when they come up with, uh. Um, basically how stable and what kind of. Well, i- i- it will have compaction, but it'd be more than that, it'd be the, the type of material, they'll, they'll factor that in along with, with that as well, so.
That's a, I told them it's probably for the rolling deal, but.
Yep.
I didn't know for sure.
That is what it's for.
They're just in a wide spot like out road and.
Any more questions for that?
Two quick things to add, one, I did get here back from our engineering intern has accepted for the summer, so. So I'm not sure when he'll be starting yet, sometime in late May, I'm guessing. Um, for obviously two months, two and a half months, so that'd be good, um. That's really, I guess that's really about it.
Anybody have a question for that?
Thank you.
Alright, next item on the agenda is to approve the recorder quarterly report. Good morning, Ashton.
Good morning.
Ashton, how are you?
We have picked up slightly from last quarter, which is good, this, I'm actually excited for next quarter, we've been really busy these last couple of weeks, I think just the spring and getting moving again, hopefully. Will start trending upwards, um, nothing major as far as pointing anything, one thing out particularly. And then the money that goes to the state. Is down slightly, that's just the taxes, not depending how much things are selling for, so that use taxes, where majority of that is at. Then that just, you know, depending what a bow or off-road vehicle sells for, that can go up or down. But as far as the number of sales, we're. Up slightly, so are there any particular questions?
No, the county side, yeah, they're up.
Mm-hmm, so, and yeah, and it's been to the, this these last two, three weeks particularly, so I hope, believe we start trending back up, fingers crossed. Um, boats, off-road vehicles. ATVs, four-wheelers.
Too, when they intend to change that, they can go to open road.
I think it did too, yeah, yeah, and even our. Our, our D, the even recordings. Are, are, uh. Five hundred dollars and just, I know that's not a lot of money that the county keeps, but. When you're keeping seven dollars per transaction, that's a lot of transactions, you know, that's, so I just want to make sure to point that out. Depending on the document.
Need a motion? I'll make a motion to approve the recorders.
Any more discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye. Alright, next on the agenda is to approve the facts and we have three. We have, we're, we have kind of like, right, holding and for the. I mean, that's what I. The motion and a second, any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Item number four is to a white regions, while regional housing authority, the director and their. Recommendation is Amber Case there.
That's just till September looks like, right?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the case for the region twelve housing authority board.
Second that.
There's a motion and a second, any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Item number five, to review and approve the board commission application, the great race had time. Can I take a look at this?
Boodles is Scott.
Yes, that's spearheaded this, um, is the what I would like to do in the future. Anybody appointed, especially when we do appointments come January first to all the boards, even people that we currently have sitting in, kind of nice, just.
Have him fill it out.
We mail this out.
Yeah.
And, because there are probably some trustees that don't have an email phone, so we may have to mail it out, but just to have it on record that they're aware that they sit on board. Yeah.
You, then you give you and I way to have contact information to get it all.
Sure.
I, I like it a lot, I think it's a great idea.
It's the, you still have the library on there twice.
Good catch.
You're welcome.
I told him, see, I can't edit this, this is a, I don't have editor on, yeah.
Well, I can let him know to take that off before they put it on the website.
Is this one, we should add two of that?
Well, in, in, in the past, region twelve has always sent a letter and say, we recommend this person, and the board just went along with that. But, I mean, that's your.
I think you should.
Yeah, that way we know more about this person, Amber that we just appointed.
Yes.
So, let's see.
So instead of city of Carol Library, we're being on there twice, switch to your region twelve. Yeah, I think we're gonna do it for one, you better do it for all. So here, he eliminated it as one.
Yeah, it's probably right, it was probably right online, but I got this one from your email, so.
That's the old one.
Okay, that's what happens when you get multiple copies.
And this will be a limited option, we can add two as needed.
No, I know, I thought. Uh, business step, now, but these things should be probably noted in the minutes, so that.
I'll make a motion that we approve.
Freshman. I'll second that.
There's a motion and a second, any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed?
Yeah, well, if, if we have to edit it, I'll probably have to have the IT department, so they'll probably put it on there. But did you all see where it was at? It was basically just under the board of supervisors page, kind of at the bottom, so. That's a good idea.
Yeah. Big lights, Western County did it, I thought it was, they just did it, so there's, I thought it was the best practice, we could copy or piggyback on.
Alright, next item is to review and approve Carroll County Safety Guidance Manual and Statement.
I mean, I don't know if anyone has any questions, it's the same one that's been floating around for. Like four months. It's just guidance, um, for department heads. Um, to implement safety practices and procedures.
So we're looking at the input, uh.
So the one, so the. Um, the statement. That's on the website, I think it's still on there, that's the one that's out of date. And, um. When I talked with Josh Exman, he said that the safety manual would replace that, so that would be. I guess you would just put.
This will be an obsolete document?
Yes.
Is the county attorney taking a look at this?
The HR, um, Renee has, so if you want to send it to him, you can. Or I can.
This is what we've had, just update, not following the date, I think.
I just want to make sure if I'm going to sign something.
His name.
Remember I drew it? Let's get things now, I. Why I have expertise, I think. It's good to review and update things, so I appreciate you sending it for your taking content.
And it's basically just. Guidance, and it came from the IMWC, a recommendation from their website, so. Um, it's basically just tailored to Carroll County, so it's.
We looking to approve the latest revision for twenty-two, twenty-twenty-four, is that where we're at here, or? Or are we asking to update the machine? Or this will be obsolete?
This is the one that will be.
Obsolete.
Cause that's, that's what's on the website now, right?
Yeah, it's like from nineteen ninety, I think, yeah.
Step was two.
I'll make a motion to approve this. Also.
There's a motion in a second, any more discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, next item on the agenda is to review the Carroll County employee handbook. Um, and according as this, so. Back in two thousand and eighteen, we did kind of overhaul of our employee handbook. Want to get in kind of the routine of where we're looking at this yearly, we're looking at organs, as I know we've been trying to work on our organs for about a year and a half now. To ratify them, so that every year, we just make sure we're staying on top of whether it's state legislation or just things that need to change locally here at Carroll County. I put this on the agenda so we can start the discussion, I'm not saying any decisions have to be made today, I know this is quite the thing to look through. It's a good, um, refresher too, so you kind of know what. What a full-time employee and how many hours they, what kind of vacation they get. Second time and things like that, so what I want to do, and that piggybacks to. This, now that we got the budget up, okay? City has started on action. These are the. Our wish list of things that we wanted to get done, and we have a handbook on there, and there's a list of a lot of other things, I think.
We've knocked some out.
We have knocked some out, so that's good, so I think if we just kind of circle back, look at this. See if there's something else we want to bring back up.
I'll go in and update it and send it out.
Thank you.
So we can see all the green or.
But I'm not sure, Courtney, if we make changes to this, if there's small changes, can we do it without having, because will Becky do this without doing a charge or? Or, and we're gonna do this.
If I remember right, when she was here, she said if there's minor changes, she would do minor changes, but she would not go and like redo the whole thing without an additional charge.
Well, I don't think there's any need to redo the whole thing, probably just some. I don't know, I didn't, do you know anything that needs to be done?
Um, I know that we talked about the sick leave, because right now we allow employees to use up to five days to care for a sick family member, and there was talk of removing that five day. And just letting people use their sick time however they self-fit. Other than that, I can't really think of anything, I mean, obviously we talked about our pay structure and.
If that's.
Well.
What about, um. You know. With, that, when people retire and they have their. Um.
Spouse stamp.
Yeah, there's a lot of that stuff, or the excess, uh.
The cop time or not. Sick leave time.
Do we need an article about that somehow to clean that up?
Yeah, it would be a more decision if we're gonna change anything, because right now, it's not a payoff, it's sick time if.
But it's, it's state that in there.
Because it can be used for insurance.
Yeah, I know that was talked about, like, the spouse being stay on if the employee retires and they're over sixty-five and the spouse isn't. And there's been spoken about removing that, um, I think, or something like that, you.
Is it clear, is it clear in there though?
That would have to be something that would be from the date of.
A go-forward.
Yeah, because there's people that are probably banking on that, I would assume.
Go back to the page, is that still maybe gonna be in works in the future?
Um, not during a general election year.
Right, I mean, it's in twenty-six and twenty-five.
I don't know, maybe we need to get together and talk about it again, um, I still feel like we, we need everybody on board to do it.
Did I ever, ever, did they ever give you what you were asking for?
As far as, um, what it would cost, or?
There was something that they didn't do, or they did, and then we dropped it, I'm going back.
Oh, they were gonna, they were gonna change the way our payroll's set up.
Yeah.
Yeah, they can do that, um, but my problem was, or my issue was, if we're not gonna have all the departments on board with turning in time sheets, then why are we making change? And so, I mean, we can make the change and still, we're gonna still get written up for not getting time sheets from everybody, even if it's one department. So I'd like to do it, get everybody on board. But. Sometimes that isn't impossible.
And I don't have time sheets, I mean, we could probably get into the two thousands and two thousand bucks, you know what I mean, it's just.
There's, there's options out there, um, obviously doing that would be a cost probably, because not every employee for the county has access to a computer to log in.
Yeah. Um, true, so remember how close people, but.
So you'd have to, I think it'd be a discussion you'd have to have, especially. Employees are so different, like in the different departments and the hours that they work and.
Yeah, the department heads or electrician will have to be on board because it changes.
Yeah.
They even have apps on your phone that you can.
And it's page, it's page seventeen. Page seventeen talks about the payout.
That's possible changes next week, and maybe get a word from Renee. And then we're.
I think we start.
Yeah, that was a good time to do it, I'm sure.
Grabbing small things that we've wanted to kind of make changes, and we start working up. Um, I don't know where we're at with. Organs is either, I know we were gonna kind of look at that, but.
Uh, he was sent everything, I haven't heard anything, but I could certainly reach out again and ask where we're at on it.
And now's the best time here.
You can even send it to the assistant. That might be helpful, maybe just send it to the assistant.
Both.
Yeah.
It is good going back on, it is good to have a record of at least which days people are at work.
So why don't we, would you guys like to take another week, take a look? At this employee handbook? See if there's anything that jumps up, and then we can make any recommendations, send it off to Renee. And see if there'd be a charge, like, Mike, you wanna look at the.
Yeah, I was just reading it now, yeah.
Well, I'm not gonna make it on the spot, make a comment, because.
Yeah.
You can take time and look at it. That makes sense, everybody?
Yep. I would like that, action sheet emailed to us too, and then we.
I'll, I'll go through it, I think, I think we've, we've got some that we can mark off.
Cool.
Yeah.
That's cool.
Yeah, because we're looking at, we're. Follow-up date, hey, I need a seventh.
It was like July of last year.
Not counting on that, anyway, moving on.
God, you change it too fast. I mean, as far as I'm. They were minor.
They're all pretty minor, but bringing it back up, it's good.
It's just progress of our time.
Well, I just, so it is. Alright, so do you guys want some time to take a look at this and then bring suggestions, maybe bring suggestions next week?
Next week, yeah.
Alright. Item skipping eight, item number nine, maneuver manually annual updates, bear with me while I get through this.
I just skip numbers.
Zion's supposed to be removed from the agenda.
Alright. AL Farm, section thirteen, Arcadia Township's changed crop rotation and use venereal analysis. N and M Farm, section three, Washington Township, four-year plan. John Offerman North, section eight, Eagle Township, no changes. Wray Park, pork, section thirty-three, even township, no changes. L and N Pork LLC, section thirty-five, Eagle Township, updated soil samples, P indexes. Delta, section four, Wheatland Township, changed property or optimum yield to use venereal analysis. Birch, section eight, Arcadia Township, changed crop rotation or optimum yields, use venereal analysis. Hawthorne Fenshaw Farms, section thirty-three, Sac Township, Sac County. Four-year plan, Townsend Fenshaw Farms, section thirty-five, East, or Sac Township, Sac County. Added acres, changed crop rotation or optimum yields, use venereal analysis. Five-six-six Woodford Creek Farms LLC, section twenty-five, Pleasant Valley Township. Changed property or optimum yields, use venereal analysis. Seven-four-one Woodford Creek Farms LLC, section thirty-four, Grant Township, no changes. Seven-four-six Wood, Woodford Creek Farms LLC, section thirteen, Union Townships, changed crop rotation or optimum yields, use venereal analysis. Seven, our farm, nine, ninety-one, Woodford Creek Farms LLC, section thirty-one, Cedar. Township, Grand County, changed property or optimum yields. Seven-four-five Woodford Creek Farms LLC, section by Nice Township, no changes. Five-six-four Woodford Creek Farms LLC, section thirty-one, Cedar Township, Grand County, change crop, crop rotation or optimum yields. Ninety-two Woodford Creek Farms LLC, section twenty-six, Wheatland Township, changed crop rotation or optimum yields, use venereal analysis. Five-six-five Woodford Creek Farms, section one, Glidden Township, changed competition or optimum yields, use venereal analysis. Dennis Haiden, number two, North, section seven, Pleasant Valley Township, changed competition or optimum yields. Use venereal analysis. Dennis Haiden, number one, South, section seven, Pleasant Valley Township, changed competition or optimum yields, use venereal analysis.
I can say it through the whole alphabet.
Did I mess up anything?
I didn't catch him.
Seven-four-four. Woodford Creek Farms LLC, section six, Union Township, changed crop rotation or optimum yields and use venereal analysis.
Going back two weeks, Wednesday, April twenty-fourth. Um, I met with Tony Baby and I exposed backflow meter, water meter, city requirements, but then house space from bathroom. Oxygen and then we discussed it later. Saturday the twenty-seventh was the last legislative forum for the twenty-four legislative session with Brian Best, last one also, it's a good meeting. Um, Wednesday, May first, I put Mary Witry at the landfill about an optical robotic sorter. For the recycling center, and we lined up a tour of the recycling center, he was running grinds for next Monday. Friday, I met with Zach. On several ongoing projects, I was seeing Mary Rose. And Friday and Saturday, I met with the painters at courthouse about. Paint in the boardroom, which we go to later today. This morning, we had our instruction review with Babings, SEH, Bluestone, I had newspaper and radio. Um, this meeting, I would like all of us to go walk through the lower two levels of the courthouse, not make decisions, but just see that. We have a lot of work to do outside of the contract, that's gonna be coming up on us pretty quick. Courtney, can you put Dalton on next week's agenda for the visuals, something else we can talk about, take over at the courthouse? Um, later today, I'm gonna drop off some documents for the assistant county attorney to review. Tomorrow at noon, G and I have CCGP board presentation. Question?
Um, that robotics sorter, what's that cost?
Um, so the recycle center now.
Yeah.
Um, most of what comes in are. Water bottles, plastic bottles.
Yeah.
If there's a robotic sorter that will kick those off the line right away, because that's the majority of it, so then they can get to the tin cans and the. Um, detergent bottles, whatever.
You know what, what does it cost, you know?
We don't, there's grant money available, we don't know, this is the beginning of it.
Wow.
Um, so the landfill, we just lost, um, storm light. Stormlight, Univista County, their recycling, we didn't lose it. We were one of the counties that bid on getting that. A lot of counties are going to single stream recycling. Which means you have one container, you put all your uh, recycles in. And right now the haulers, they come, they pull the pickup truck in all the cities. In one bin, the plastics go in another bin, the newspaper go in another bin. Then when they get to the landfill, they have to pull in door number one, pull out the newspaper, door number two, pull out the glass, door number three, pull out the plastics, whatever. But um, the company, I think it was out of La Mars. Um, did it, and it's easier for the hauler number one, because they can just have a garbage truck with the arm come and dump it all in. Instead of having to may drive the truck and.
Oh, yeah.
It's something that is the the new um, the new way of what's coming to recycling. Well, it wouldn't reduce any headcount. At the landfill, but it would make um, it cleaner perhaps as far as what goes into what section.
Yeah.
But yeah, that was next Monday. I'm kind of excited.
You know.
They rescheduled the times.
The one you're looking at, only sorts of bottles?
It's, I think it's, it might be air. I think it's a visual system and then the air blows them away. Yeah, water bottles are incredible. That's what most of it is. They don't weigh anything by. By weight volume, but by numbers, water bottles are the the most that come across, clear, sort of bottles.
Yeah.
Yeah, with this, the single stream, because that's what we had in Virginia. You basically just get another trash can.
Yes.
So then everyone would need a trash can. And then it would be a different truck.
Exactly.
As well.
But it's less labor intense.
They would need the truck and then everybody would have to have a trash can.
But the haulers prefer it.
Who? Was labor intensive.
The hauler.
The haul, yes.
They would pick it up just like they pick your trash.
So your cardboard, I mean, wish now if you use the red recycling bins, everything goes in, but the the. The hauler sorts it before they put it in their container they're pulling. This will all go in one.
You have to trust that the homeowner uses it as a recycling bin as well.
Right. Well, the amount of trash they go to, yeah, we should line up or tour out there. It's quite a process to recycle.
I can go next. I don't have a lot, but I guess this week I'll be reviewing the handbook. And updating action log. Um, also, if you didn't know. On our shared drive, the action log is on the shared drive, the one that we can all see. And I I did also have tabs at the bottom. For our safety risk assessment items, which I think they're all done. And then there's a tab for the financial audit items. And then there's just. You know, the act, the action log, so I'll update that. And send that out as well. Other than that, I don't have anything this week. Did you find it? Oh, okay. It's in the shared.
Um.
Oh, maybe it's because.
I don't have a lot, but first of all, there's a W A M, may send out a deal on May seventh, May eighth, which would be tomorrow on. Wednesday, they have a private well stewardship program like. All about private well owners in Oakland and Red Oak, Iowa. So. From six to seven PM. Uh, and the only thing I really have to report on is been dealing with um. Environmental service issue through the Board of Health, so. Lot of that going on there. That's it.
Uh, back two weeks ago, on the twenty-third, two day head policy council meeting. Think you're one well there as far as enrollment or third goal. On target, there, or what they've been at. Um, and so that with that. Then I went to at Rowan Hills, uh, board meeting for mental health. Uh, we basically went through the financials. Um, there was a school-based funding request from DCAT coordinator. Which would have been for this area, but that was. Put up A P O D M. Uh, there was a question if they were gonna get the money from DCAT and that did come through, so we don't, and I did get. Even on that, but. We left all been taken care of. Um. We did approve the Plains area mental health center fiscal twenty-five budget request. For them, and then we did approve contracts. The Cherokee Regional Medical Center, Midstep Services Center for Suland, Man in Regional Health Care and Stanford Centers. B B R N C and Family Resource Center. Um. We did deny a request from Cherokee Regional Medical Center for some trade for ninety-three thousand seven hundred fifty, but we considered. A lot of that could not necessarily be put down. Uh, then on Thursday, I had a new opportunity board meeting. Uh, we had a special guest there, that Cox from uh, Kansas City with the. Federal Head Start Program. Uh, and then we did go through the financials there and uh. Uh, basically, reported on everything we did on on the head start earlier. And. That was. That. And then. I also attended the legislature from on Saturday. And then uh. Uh. Last week, or we didn't have anything, then I did. This morning, Kansas Board House, we reviled. And this week I have uh, new D F C C G P board.
A lot of mine is translated of Scott, secondary roads. Anthony's been a radio. Difficult ones, which others on us, if you just haven't left the new staff to learn, she is working and working out really well. Um, his sheriff also has. Hired a new deputy. We have time, he starts on the, he starts the sixteen. Um, ended to a courthouse walk through, went out to secondary road with some issues that we have. And this week I have, oh, it's funny, we had big construction and then I did um, go to the Republican meetings. This week I have region twelve executive board. So we have for the rest of this week, uh, courthouse walk through. That's it right on. Oh, and I did reach out to John Weber, just wanted an update on the furniture for our future room, and I did let him know. That our ETA is June tenth for our first meeting to be back at the courthouse, so. So those, that furniture show up.
Well.
Well, I'm probably able.
Do I have anything for next week?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, that's okay. I T. Audiovisual handbook, bill day. Do you want to talk about moving the meeting to Tuesdays or no? I'm just wondering, because that's when. We have safety meetings, so I just. Which is not a problem, it's just a bit, but.
So that is actually on the. Action item list. So if you update that, give that to us. Again, rearrange what our priority items would be.
And it is also possible that I get, I can send everything out instead of sending it out Friday morning, I can send it out Thursday. So you would have Friday. Also, but but. Doesn't really matter.
Yeah.
To you.
What should we do here?
Second. There's a motion and a second, any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying hi.
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 Those. Question carries.